I have, I've wrote, I've wrote the ID down. Yeah, yeah. God, Mal, I had to run. No, I haven't got the password. Three, two, five. Nine, two, two. Okay, lovely. Thank you, Mal. Oh dear. Yeah, do you want to, just in case? It's weird because that says it's. Oh, it's, oh no, that's, it's all right.
Hi, Mandy.
Are you Trace?
Are you right?
No.
Oh, why?
I've been having a right panic.
What's up?
Well, I brought my work laptop home and it wouldn't, it's not, it's not coming on. I'm putting the River Plum Hills in and the screen's just blank. So I've had to log on with my home one and I couldn't get that on. So I've had to ring Mal.
Oh, bless her.
I think we're all right now.
Yeah, well, we've still got time.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, Mal. Mal sent herself an invite, just in case I have any other problems.
Oh, bless her. Well, it's always the way, isn't it, Mandy? We had a practice this morning.
All right, Mouth. Yeah. All right. Okay. Oh, thanks, Mouth. Thank you so much. Sorry to have bothered you. All right. Thank you. Yeah. Cheers, Mouth. Bye.
Bless her. Don't worry, Mandy.
I had such a right panic.
Oh, I know, it does. It does freak you out, doesn't it? She, what's she gonna do? Join and?
Yeah, she's gonna log on in a bit, just to make sure everything's all right.
Yeah. Bless her.
Yeah, I'm all right now. Oh dear.
Come back normal, normal world.
Yeah. Oh dear.
Oh, Mandy. It's horrible.
I don't know what's the matter with my laptop. I'm sure. I've used it today. Whether, I don't know why, if the batteries, I mean, I've got it charging, you know, it's plugged in, so I don't know why it's not coming on.
It just won't turn on?
No, it's just black. The screen's black.
How weird. You shook it and banged it around?
Yeah.
Do you know, I think that happened to mine once. I just kept turning it on and off.
If I sort of turn it on and off, I can see it says it's loading or something. But I don't know.
No, I, I, once I was carrying mine, I was in the office, carrying it from room, one room to another, and it, when I put it down, it just went blank.
Yeah.
And I thought that had, you know, broken or something.
Oh, Trace.
Oh dear.
I did, I did let Geoff in, but I could see he's there, but his, his picture's not there.
Yeah, I think he's got his video turned off on his mic. Yeah.
Once it started, I'll put myself on mute.
Yeah. So it's, so it's on recording?
Yeah, but I think that's the.
Zoom bit, not the?
Yeah, I think that.
Yeah, I've got my phone here, so I can see. I've got Witchaven on the YouTube.
It's not on, it's not live, is it? No.
No, no.
I was gonna say, it's still, there's the thing that says live on YouTube, which I presume I've gotta press.
Yeah.
In a bit.
Yeah. Oh, Mandy.
Yeah, I think that's because it's recorded in the cloud.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Just see if I've got my. I'm just gonna quickly see if I've got that. Oh, yeah, that's there.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, gosh. So we're not, we're not gonna put that up yet until people, till Jed starts it. That's always a bit weird, though, not having the controls at the bottom sometimes.
That's weird, because once you did that, it took it off my screen.
Did it?
Yeah, it's gone off my screen. Oh, there it is. It's all right.
Is it still there? I stopped sharing.
Oh, that's better.
Stop share. Send it back to us.
It's gone off again now.
What I've just put up is all panelists.
Yeah.
Hi, Tracy.
Hiya, Jed. You all right?
Very well, thanks. Hi, Amanda.
Hello. Look a bit more, don't look so white now.
You don't look so pale, no.
I've put loads of makeup on. And I've drawn the curtains, so that doesn't look bad. I've already been through my Goth stage, so I didn't really wanna do it again.
Tracy, it's Mike Tennant here. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Mike.
I'm, I'm sitting in a darkened room.
Are you?
It's because I'm in a, an Airbnb on the Norfolk coast.
Oh, are you?
I look like some sort of alien. I'm gonna switch my video off.
Oh, that's all right. We won't, we, when the presentation's up anyway, we're not gonna see many people, so.
Okay, I'll just switch video off. Cheers, thanks.
Yeah, bye, bye. Hello, Bradley.
Hi, you okay?
Yeah, how's your back today?
It's a million times better than it was a week ago, so it feels fantastic.
Going the right way then.
It is, which is great.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah.
Nothing worth. Turn my light off. Oh no. Oh no, that's better. Can't see me at all.
No.
I think because I've got a white screen, I've not. I'll just be a Goth again, the third time. Hi, Mouth.
Hi, Mouth.
Hi, Mouth, Mandy. You all okay?
Yes, thank you.
Good. Somebody watching The Chase or something like that in the background?
Yeah, I'll put mine on mute, sorry.
A bit of entertainment.
Yeah, but Bradley recognised the theme tune, so.
I certainly do, yeah.
I was, I was just, I was just watching actually before I came down and there was some lady on there, she, she couldn't even get her name right, so she had no chance.
Oh dear, God.
What's your name? Oh, oh, oh.
Oh, that's me at interviews. That's why I've been at Witchaven for thirty odd years.
Hello.
I'm Mark. Andrew.
Hi, Andy.
Hi, Andy.
Are we all well?
I think so.
Nice to see you.
Good, good. Bit of a delay there, but you had to think about it. Never mind. Last night was good.
Yes.
Who was there last? Mark was there, wasn't he? Yeah.
I was.
Very, very good, yeah.
Oh, good.
Yeah, some, some quite, some quite interesting developments came out of that. The five-year land supply was a surprise.
Well, as if it goes through, yeah.
Well, yes, it may not, of course. Yeah, yeah. And then, and the neighbourhood planning might be a bit worrying for people that are in the middle of doing one.
There's a lot of questions up in the air at the moment.
Yeah, there are indeed, yeah, yeah. No, very good. Good session.
Good.
Hello, everybody.
Hello, Alex.
Good morning, Alex.
Alex.
Nice to see some friendly faces.
Which screen are you looking at, Alex?
Oh, thanks for that, Jed. I'm always delighted when these things work, actually. It's, I find it a great relief.
Don't we all? The ones this.
Not as much as me, not as much as me, I can tell you.
Not as much as Mandy and me.
How many people were expecting?
About sixty.
Oh, gosh, right, yeah. Nice, Stephen, that's good.
Hi, Alex, how are you?
Hi, Stephen.
Hi, Bradley, hi.
It's a very posh shirt he puts on there, Andrew.
Thank you.
Like parakeets or something.
Little parakeets and parrots, yes.
Wow.
I still think it's summer.
Hmm.
Shorts sleeves, but.
Oh, gosh.
I see you've been putting the, the invitations around, Tracy, for the.
Yeah, the team's been doing that, yeah. Good, yeah.
They seem to be popping up all over the place. I've spread a few around as well, so.
Oh, good stuff, yeah, yeah.
Get some people, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just waiting to look at some of the comments, I'm looking for comments on Facebook. He's not watching The Chase, Bradley.
Not, are they?
Do you know offhand how many are expected from Evesham, Tracy?
From Evesham, um, we're only allowed two per, per council. I think two would come in and I think three or more.
Okay.
Yeah.
A shame that, isn't it? Because I'm sure there'd be lots of people that would like to come.
They can, oh, sorry, what's that?
Tonight? Why, why is it restricted to two per parish?
What, tonight, you mean?
Yeah.
Because they, they can watch it live on YouTube.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, because we didn't know how many we were gonna have, you see, so it was, we got sixty coming along, I think.
There was ninety-three last night, which I thought was a.
Yeah, that was good.
Nice number, yeah.
Yeah.
I think at one stage there was over a hundred.
Was there?
Yeah.
Yeah, there are a few people that just turned their video off, which I think is a bit of a shame sometimes. The name in a black box, like we've got one or two there.
Thank you, Andy, that was me. I turned mine off.
Who's else speaking?
David.
I haven't got David.
David Morris.
David Manning, no.
Morris.
Yeah, me, David Morris.
No, I can't see you. Where are you?
Here. Oh, no, you're not.
Oh, yes, I am.
Still can't see you.
You can't miss me, for God's sake. It's the first time anybody's said that. That's the first time anybody's ever said that.
David always looks as if he's reclining in a sort of.
Yeah.
Staying in posture.
Locked up on my screen, ah, I've got two, ah.
Because I've got a cheap stand from Amazon for my iPad. Oh, stop, I'm sorry, I've got.
I've got you now, okay. Know your glory.
Says in my top corner, this is being recorded now.
It is, yeah.
Andy respond with extreme innocence.
It's only been recorded to the cloud, so we only see that. It's, it's not on YouTube yet.
I'll try to get you a bit nearer, because you look so young.
Hello, Tracy, I haven't seen you for a bit.
Oh, hello, Bob. How are you?
I'm good. You keeping okay?
Yeah, great, thank you, yeah.
Yeah, good.
I'm coming in thick and fast now.
Thirty-three we've got so far. Tracey, you all right if I do the live bit now, just in case it takes a couple of minutes? Yeah, no, do that, yeah. We're on, we're going live on YouTube, everybody.
How are we doing, Mandy?
It's not recognising me, unfortunately. Mouth, Mouth's going, Mouth's logged on, so Mouth's going to do it. Don't worry, we'll get there.
Got everybody on that we're expecting?
Hello, we've got forty-six. I was expecting about sixty, but that, but maybe they've not joined, or they might join later.
Okay, well, I'm conscious of the time and it is, according to my laptop, one minute past six. So I'd like to kick things off, if I may.
Email.
My name is councillor Jed Bearcraft and I'm the councillor for Great Hampton and also the chairman of the Communities and Funding Advisory Panel. And I'd like to welcome you all to this evening's Witchaven Parish event. And I just wanna go through a few housekeeping points before we start. The first one, the most important one, is the, the microphone, the mute and the microphones, please. We're all getting used to the Zoom these days, so any background noise, it picks up, so please keep your microphones on mute. That'd be great. The event is being livestreamed on YouTube, so if you do not want to be seen on YouTube, please turn your camera off. Throughout the evening, you'll be allowed to ask questions, but I'm asking you, please, to do it through the chat bar on the bottom of the, of your laptop. We will endeavour to pick up the questions and at the end of the sessions, the two sessions, we will endeavour to answer these questions. Anything that's left outstanding, then, then we will send the information through and answers to questions on email after the meeting. Okay, all the slides again will be sent. And any of the information that comes up tonight. And if you're that way inclined, you will be able to watch this back on YouTube as many times as you like. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce councillor Bradley Thomas. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you, Jed. So my name is councillor Bradley Thomas. I'm the leader of the council and I'm going to give you a quick run-through of what 2020 has looked like for Witchaven District Council. So I can start by thanking everybody for dialing in. I can see lots of friendly and familiar faces from amongst the parishes, and I'm grateful that you've taken your time to dial in and get this update. So coronavirus, well, it wouldn't be a 2020 event if we didn't talk about it, would it? And rightly so, because this pandemic, it's been brutal, it's been unforgiving, and it's tangibly affected, I think, every single facet of our community. And you can see on that graphic there, which many of you will have seen before, the approach that we've taken. And I'll talk you through how we've approached this, what impact we've made, what difference we feel we've delivered in our community over the last six months. But you can see there, we focused on supporting the economy, helping people in need, and ensuring that we can still deliver those critical services, so that your, your bins, et cetera, the collection of those and delivery services is all interrupted. And throughout everything, we've tried to keep you well informed. Right, next slide, please, Tracy. Thanks. Okay, so, so far, well, coronavirus, you know, back in March, impact, impacted Witchaven, just like everybody else. Staff had to, staff had to disrupt their regular working patterns and we had to step in and provide the financial support that the government announced to businesses. And you can see there that we've distributed very swiftly in the space of just a few weeks, identified the eligible businesses and paid out more than thirty-two million pounds in support payments to local businesses. And I really do commend all of our council officers for how swiftly they managed to get this money out to those who needed it. You can see there that we've also prevented thirty-nine people from sleeping rough. This is when lockdown was imposed and government issued a mandate to local authorities to get homeless people off the streets. And part of the legacy, a positive legacy, we hope, will come from coronavirus is that we'll be able to identify long-term arrangements to ensure that, that those vulnerable people don't end up going back onto the streets and that they're able to get the support that they need to make longer-term changes to their lifestyle that move them in the right direction. You can see that we've provided support to most vulnerable as part of the County Council here to help scheme, in addition to providing council tax support to more than five hundred people within the district who needed that and were eligible. And you've got listed there fifteen thousand pounds that we paid out via district councils as part of emergency ward budget. So each district councillor was allocated five hundred pounds to support local organisations that provided services to residents within their wards. And the kind of things that this was spent on were things like going to caring hands, community prescription delivery service that took place, Droidwich CVS, the Pershaw Volunteer Centre, and supporting the resettlement of refugees as well. And you can see at the bottom there, again, it's reiterating that point around regular comms with parishes, residents, businesses, and everyone who receives services from the district council. Okay, so the first approach that we took was wanting to maintain as many services as possible, and I think we're pretty successful in managing to do that. It did mean that staff had to perhaps alter the ways that they were working, but first and foremost, we wanted to ensure that things like bins were collected, that there was no disruption there, you know, being mindful that with people working from home more, people were perhaps gonna have more waste to dispose of. And you could see on one of the bullet points there, that seven hundred plus additional tonnes of recycling were collected, as well as one thousand one hundred and seventy-six additional tonnes of household waste. And as a consequence of the good weather at the start of the lockdown, I know we've had a large increase in subscriptions to garden waste bins. And this all is a consequence of people being at home more. But what, what did this actually look like? What did coronavirus look like for Witchaven and how it impacted us as an organisation? Well, you can see there, it cost the district council over two million pounds in lost income and additional expenditure. And the government have been true to their word, they set out early on that councils would be reimbursed for lost budgeted income and any additional expense that was incurred as a consequence of sudden measures that came into place. But that doesn't mean that there isn't any long-term pressure arising from the economic downturn that we're starting to see. And that will all transpire in terms of impact on business rates, perhaps increased levels of council tax support. And a significant chunk of the council income comes from car parks. And of course, without people going and going about their lives in, in the way that they used to, you know, shopping habits, et cetera, then we. then we certainly feel the pinch there. A positive is that we did see more people going to our parks, particularly when lockdown restrictions were starting to be lifted or when people were going out for exercise etcetera, but we did see more littering as a consequence. So in short, you know, Witchaven certainly hasn't been, certainly hasn't avoided any impact, you know, we felt it quite tangibly, but this council has been in a strong position to weather whatever storm gets thrown at us and coronavirus has been a proverbial rainy day and as a consequence, we're adapting the ways that we meet customer needs and the very dedicated officers at the council, they're adapting to new agile ways of working too. Next slide please, Tracy. Okay, so relatively early on, within, you know, a matter of weeks of lockdown restrictions coming into place, we started to think about how Witchaven can respond. This council has a very strong track record, not just of listening to a community, but proactively using its resources to ensure that it can deliver what its objectives are and, you know, to support those in need and to ensure that even in really tough times, Witchaven remains a great place to live. So we were one of the first councils anywhere in the country to come up with a recovery framework plan. And you can see a graphic there, we can ensure that a copy is distributed and that will highlight all of the areas that we identified we want to focus on, but there are those four main pillars that we've got there. And absolutely at the top of this is supporting our community and local economy. We know that the local economy is under increasing amounts of pressure. To say it was challenged before coronavirus was an understatement in many respects if we think about town centres. And you can see there, the second main bullet point, that there's going to be a huge focus on what the future of our town centres look like, how we can support the local economy, what that skills agenda looks like to ensure that people are able to, you know, have confidence that there will be quality employment for them going. But you can see the other three pillars of the recovery plan there, predominantly focus on the council as an organisation. So that's ensuring that, you know, councillors are able to represent your views and your opinions and ensure that local concerns are heard and ensuring that the organisation as a corporate body is able to adapt. So having staff, you know, work more in a more agile fashion, ensuring that the council's business is reset in order to adapt to, you know, the constantly changing pressures of the day. Next slide please, Tracy. Okay, so a little bit more about the response and we have seen during coronavirus, the very best of what our society has got to offer. We saw the strength, the compassion, the resolve of community efforts and building upon that, Witchaven is keen to use resources that it's got and resources that it can tap into to deliver, you know, a stronger community and a stronger economy ongoing. And here are a few highlights of what we are doing and what we've done. So you can see there that we received one hundred and one thousand pounds of funding from the government to support the voluntary sector, including food banks, and we know that that has made tangible difference locally and has been very, very well received by those who needed it most. Many of you will be aware of the Building Back Together Fund that the government announced a few months ago to kick-start what they called shovel-ready projects that will spur economic growth locally. And across Worcestershire, bids were put in and we were very fortunate that in Witchaven, we are receiving six hundred thousand pounds from this fund towards new industrial units at Vale Park. And these will be to support small and growing businesses and crucially, create economic growth and jobs, particularly for those people who've got concerns about what their economic futures look like. Of course, we did see during the pandemic, a change in lifestyle habits and people started to take up more cycling, walking, active travel. And we've had a long-term pledge to recruit an active travel officer since long before the pandemic. And we're almost at the culmination of that person joining the organisation and their role is, we always describe it as licor need not apply, this is not someone who's a sports development officer, but this is somebody who can help unblock the challenges that we're facing when trying to deliver more walking and cycling infrastructure to enable our residents to fulfil their health and wellbeing aspirations, but also to support, you know, a greener economy as well. And you can see a couple of final points there around more community funding. We've delivered thirty-three thousand pounds to eight voluntary sector projects through a crowdfunding scheme and Witchaven councillors have now got another budget that they can use to support community recovery. So that's five hundred pounds per councillor. So please speak to your district councillor about how that fund can be best used within your parish and engage with them over how that money can make a difference going forwards. Okay, so coronavirus aside, twenty twenty has still been a positive year for Witchaven. Right at the start of the year, we approved a new strategy for the timeframe twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four. And some of you may have heard of this already, it was approved just before lockdown and where we formerly had our old People Place in Prosperity strategic pillars, we've now got three new themes that we think reflect the aspirations, the challenges and the hopes of the district. And this strategy was born out of extensive dialogue with residents, with parishes, with elected council members and partners too. So we feel it's pretty reflective of the direction of travel that we want the council to continue going in, but that is in line with people's and residents' aspirations. And we've done an assessment on this sort of post-COVID to identify what needs to, what timeframes need to change. And we're all very pleased that largely this strategy is unaffected and we're able to deliver the bulk of our promises as we'd hoped. So if you can move on to the next slide, please, Tracy. So you've just got a very small snapshot here and I'm not going to go through all of them, but just pick out a few highlights. So supporting people, a continued pledge to tackle loneliness and social isolation. We've just had a very good piece of work done by a group of Witchaven councillors looking at this issue and I'm sure council will be keen to take up their recommendations. You can see we've got a pledge there to deliver one thousand affordable homes and at least fifteen percent of those in rural areas. I'm not going to get into the planning matters, there will be an update on that a bit later on this evening. And one that we're really proud of in particular is delivery of new sports and physical activity facilities. So football, whitewater and cycling facilities. So there'll be a whitewater facility on the River Avon at Pershaw and a centre of cycling excellence at Evesham as well. Strong economy in places absolutely remains top of the agenda, as I've already said. And we've got an ongoing commitment to ensuring that there is high-quality employment at Vale Park and the Worcestershire side up towards the M5. We're very actively pushing the grants agenda to ensure that we can support businesses as they grow and particularly with regard to apprenticeships. But a big one for us now is focusing on the future of our town centres. And many of you will be aware that we've previously pledged to provide up to fifty thousand pounds of funding to develop a masterplan in each town, Pershaw, Evesham and Droidwich. And work on that really is starting to begin in this year. And a huge amount of council's resources will be focused on ensuring that we can create that future vision to draw in the inward investment that will enable us to shape our towns as really high-quality places for people to live, work and spend their leisure time as we move forwards out of the pandemic. And then finally, we've got this sustainable environment pillar. And Vic will speak shortly about one of our other cornerstones, the intelligently green plan, but just a few highlights here around reducing our greenhouse gas emissions, a litter reduction campaign and reducing household waste there and helping set up community fridges to reduce food waste. So across the board, we've got a really strong commitment to the areas that our residents identified as what matter most to them and ensuring that we can support the local economy and local people in delivering on their aspirations. And final point from me, many of you will have known Jack Hegarty, the former managing director of Witchaven. Well, Jack retired just a few months ago after sixteen years as chief exec and twenty years in total with the organisation, but we're in very safe hands. Jack was succeeded by Vic Allison, who equally, I think many of you will know. And Vic took the role of joint chief executive between Mulvan Hills and Witchaven District Councils. He started on the first of August and we're absolutely delighted that Jane Pickering is starting with us on Monday as the new deputy chief executive for Witchaven. And Jane has got, much like Vic, long heritage in local government, no local government inside out and no doubt Jane will be an absolute credit to us in the same way that Vic is and Jack was. I think that concludes my slides, Tracy, but I know we'll take some questions at the end once Vic wraps up his slides. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bradley. We move on now to the intelligently green plan and I'd like to introduce Vic Allison, thank you.
Thanks Jed and good evening to everybody. Before I get into the intelligently green plan, just something quickly for your diaries. We are going through a electoral review here at Witchaven. We are engaging with the Local Government Boundary Commission for England. And if a two-stage process, so the first stage is around the council size, the district council size, in other words, the number of members, and then the second stage is around warding patterns, which will be of particular interest to town and parish councils, we suspect. And the Local Government Boundary Commission would like to engage with town and parish councils. And ahead of the formal consultation process, there's a bit of an introductory session being arranged, twelfth of November, six PM, and similarly, that would be via Zoom. So details will be coming out for that, but for now, can you maybe just make a note in your diaries that that's going to be taking place on the twelfth of November? Okay, thank you, Tracy. So I want to just say a few words about our new intelligently green plan, because I know it's a very topical subject. So we have now adopted this new plan, which will take us from the current year to twenty thirty, so it's a ten-year plan. It replaces the last intelligently green plan, which was adopted in two thousand and twelve and ran until now. So this is the district council's response to the current climate change issues and the need to reduce carbon emissions. And it's not just about the council as an organisation, in fact, far from it. It's about Witchaven as a place and we all can play our part in that, businesses, residents and so on. So it builds on our already strong track record on green issues from the first intelligently green plan. And there you go, what we will do to reduce our emissions and how we can support others and encourage others to do the same. And as with all things, it's not just down to one, as with these things, it's not just down to one organisation to make a difference. We all need to play our part and I want to explain a little bit about what town and parish councils can do to help. But before I get to that, just to briefly say what the intelligently green plan is all about. So we set out our vision and that's set out there on the slide. So to lead Witchaven, there's a district to become a neutral as quickly as possible and by the twenty fifty deadline that the government has set for the country at the very latest, to make the most of opportunities that tackling climate change will bring in terms of strengthening and growing our local economy. And there we're talking particularly around growth in the green economy and then also linking back to the strategy that Bradley was talking about earlier around the environmental issues in terms of increasing and improving range of habitats across the district to support carbon capture and biodiversity. So that's the overall sort of vision for the council in terms of its intelligently green plan. And then we have some pretty tough targets, Tracy, if you could just go to the next slide. So that's what we, that's the test we're setting ourselves. So reduce our greenhouse gas emissions by at least seventy-five percent based on two thousand and eighteen, nineteen emissions, halving district-wide carbon emissions from two thousand and five levels, doubling the size of Witchaven's low-carbon economy, travelling the amount of renewable energy generation in the district against the two thousand and sixteen baseline, that one. And then capturing at least five hundred tonnes of carbon dioxide or equivalent per year by twenty twenty-five. So pretty ambitious targets, I think you'll all agree, but necessary if we are to make that difference and achieve that overall vision. In terms of the plan itself, there's four elements to it, setting out the actions under each, energy, low carbon, travel, the natural environment, and then there's a bit of a catch-all policy resources, we call it. We could have called it a number of things, but it's about influencing and resources and so on. So that's how we structured the document, as it were. And Tracy, your next slide. And this is where we think that town and parish councils may like to help. I don't know about you, but there's the bottom of the slide, there should be a link to the intelligently green plan. If you want to go and have a look at it, but I don't know about you, but I can't see that on my screen. But if I just say it so that you know, it's at witchaven.gov.uk, the council's main site and then forward slash intelligently green, one word. Okay, so that's witchaven.gov.uk forward slash intelligently green, one word. So by all means, go and have a look at what the intelligently green plan actually says. Some of the things where town and parish councils can get involved, energy awareness campaigns, reducing carbon emissions in your own community buildings. So things you can do to the buildings as well as more efficient use of energy within those buildings. EV charging points, so the district council has already increased the number of EV charging points in its own car parks in our town centres, we've increased an additional twenty charging points earlier this year. And there are, you know, town and parish councils also own buildings and own land. And, you know, we ask that you maybe consider, it doesn't have to be expensive, quite often it can be, it can be literally a plug socket on an external wall with weather protection. So simple as that, so we do ask you to consider whether EV charging points on your own buildings and land might just be possible. Promoting the Green Homes Grants, more is going to come out on that, but the government's new initiative around grant-aiding people to install energy efficiency measures in their homes. But, you know, you can help to promote that scheme to people from your town and parishes. Community-based transport options, and we saw a great example of that at Norton the other week when that was launched. Promoting car pooling schemes, active travel, habitat pollinator projects, new allotments. If you have land, you know, grow your own and all, you know, sustainability benefits of that, ask you to consider that. Maybe even develop your own carbon reduction plans. And soon to arrive is our new carbon reduction officer. So we are jointly with Mulvan employing a carbon reduction officer who will be the focal point for a lot of this activity. When they start, we'll let you know their contact details and please, please do have a conversation with him when they start. Very quick run-through of our intelligently green plan. Have a look, have a think about what you might be able to do in your own localities. And as I say, you know, we're only going to achieve these objectives if we all pull together on this. So that's all I wanted to say, but I think it's question time now, is it, Jed?
Okay, thank you very much there, Vic. I'd like to thank most of the panellists as well for turning the mics off, it does help. And I did notice there are a couple still with mics on. If I could ask you, please, to turn the mics off and then it does stop all the background noise. We've got a couple of questions from councillor Peter Griffiths. And the first one would be, the two million extra cost of pandemic is clearly a significant sum of money. Will this whole amount be covered by central government or will we need to dip into reserves to fund any shortfall? I think that's aimed at you, Vic.
Yeah, okay, so we've had government grant assistance by way of grant. So two elements of that grant, so we've had cash grants to the value of around about one point three million. And then as part of the government's sales and fees and charges initiative, where we can prove that we have not met our budgeted income targets for car parking income. not met our budgeted income targets or car parking income, planning income, building control income and so on. And the government's agreed to pay us a proportion of that loss. And we've just submitted our claim and that's around six hundred and fifty thousand pounds. So in total, just just short of two million pounds will be received from the government. Our actual additional costs and loss expenditure is just over two million pounds. So there's a small shortfall there of a couple of hundred thousand pounds for which we'll need to either make the savings or dip into reserves, as as Peter suggests. The 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 longer term issue, assuming that, you know, we we recover from this and we're not into a second lockdown or anything like that, which would impact us further. But the the longer term issue here is is our local taxation and tax bases. So will will the economic impact result in a reduced council tax base and a reduced business rate space going forward, as badly suggested in this slide? So we need to think about the longer term, medium term impact of this, but short term, yes, pretty much all covered by by government grant.
And also from councillor Peter Griffiths. So we just moved it up there. Can we consider e-bike charging points available in town centres to encourage the use of low-sea form of travel? Who would like to field that one?
Well, I I can I can sort of say that we'll take that away and have a look at that. That's not something that's been been raised before. The the focus has been on electric vehicle charging points rather than e-bike charging points. I'll confess that I know very little about e-bike charging, but I will. I will take that one away, Peter, and see if if there's something we can do. We have given a commitment to trial bike hire or bike scheme, hire bike scheme, potentially linking up town centres with transport hubs such as railway stations and stuff. So maybe we could look at that alongside that particular initiative. But yeah, e-bike charging points, that's a new one for me. I just assume people did all that at home, but you know what, let's 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 have a look at it. And if there's a need and it's viable, we could we could potentially do that.
Councillor Bradley Thomas had your hand up.
I did, yeah, thanks Jed. Well, I was going to say what Vic said, which was, yeah, the bike charging points, that's a new one on me. We can go away and look at that as part of our subgroup on intelligently green. But on the point around finance, I think it is worth stressing that we have very, very regular dialogue with government and ministers. There are frequent calls with M H C L G. And so whatever we're impacted by, the whole sector is being impacted by. So government will be acutely aware of the financial challenges that councils face. And, you know, hopefully that means that any future sort of impact, you know, the longer coronavirus goes on in terms of, you know, losses to impact and expenditure, et cetera. Government will, you know, fingers crossed, be continue to be sympathetic.
I've got a question now from Stuart Carter. Is it likely that the tax base may reduce?
Shall I have a go at that one? I mean, the the obviously the physical tax base won't reduce because the the number of houses well, well, is impact increasing, albeit it's probably a slower rate than than we were thinking about twelve months ago or six months ago before before Covid. But nonetheless, the physical tax base will 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 increase each year. The the issue for us, as I'm sure Stuart's aware, is the number of people who are in receipt of council tax support, which will effectively reduce the the take from council tax and that feeds into the 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 council tax base we use for council tax setting purposes. And at the moment, it's kind of the 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 council tax support increase is kind of balancing out the tax base growth that ordinarily would have would have happened. So I think I think probably best to assume a flat tax base over the next year or so. And then returning to the the increases each year we've seen and gotten used to in the past, so which is strong growth. But from the numbers I've seen very recently, I would say that, you know, assume assume a flat tax base rather than a reduction or an increase certainly for next year. But we we will share with all the town and parishes, we will share, you know, latest tax base information as we get closer to Christmas, when we've got the 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 better forecasts and we're more able to suggest what might happen.
Thank you very much, Vic, and thank you for all the questions. Again, I'd like to say that if if you think of anything else you'd like to have answered, please type the question and we will endeavour to answer it and get them through to you. And we will move on now to the Economic Recovery Plan. And I'd like to introduce Chris Brooks, our regeneration manager. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bearcroft. That's my, I'm just going to do three, hopefully relatively straightforward slides. And really, I'm starting with the immediate impact that hit us back in March. And I'll move then through the sort of more intermediate results and through to a bit more about the future. I think we've got to think in all of this that the the context is of a a situation where we've had something like a twelve percent drop in G D P, gross domestic product, where unemployment has increased, hasn't doubled yet across Whichaven, but it has gone up from about twelve thousand last year to about twenty thousand at this point this year. And one suspects that figure sadly will rise. So that's the rather challenging context to all of this. So my first slide really looks at some of the immediate responses that my team was heavily involved with and which forms part of the plan. Councillor Thomas referenced this earlier, the the amount of money that was paid out through the business rates-based grant scheme. So any business with a ratable value of below fifteen thousand pounds per annum in receipt of small business rate relief was eligible for a ten thousand pound grant. And any business in the retail, hospitality and leisure sector with a ratable value fifteen thousand up to fifty thousand nine hundred ninety-nine received twenty five thousand pounds per property. In addition to ten thousand for any that they had with a ratable value below fifteen thousand. And that sounds quite complicated and it's hard to take in in one go. Unfortunately, there were a lot of businesses with ratable values just over fifteen thousand pounds per annum. And they were not using the government's definition in the retail, hospitality or leisure category. That might include dentists and children's nurseries or manufacturing companies, all struggle perhaps more than they would have done if they'd have been in a slightly smaller premises. We've also provided one point four eight million to one hundred and seventy-eight businesses through the top-up or discretionary fund. The government provided it or described it as discretionary. They gave us five percent of the total budget, the overall scheme. But in calling it discretionary, it was clear that certain sectors had to be supported. Whichaven District Council therefore chose to stick to the government's criteria, focusing on those sectors that missed out on the main scheme. Those were market traders with fixed building costs, B and Bs paying council tax rather than business rates, charities that get charitable relief, businesses in shared spaces that are contributing to fixed costs through rents who don't but who didn't themselves have business rate liability. And retail, hospitality and leisure businesses who were excluded because of that higher threshold in the main. That fund was spent one hundred percent. Slightly in excess of one hundred. We've also worked with businesses to implement the pavement licence scheme. And this came in really when things started to open up in July. And certainly in my view, this has been a great success, enabling cafes, pubs, restaurants to have an on-street presence. The scheme is managed by Worcestershire Regulatory Services and with close input from our colleagues at the county council as well. And it has certainly helped create a more continental, if you like, feel. And perhaps it's to pick up one very small positive in this situation, it might have offered a glimpse of how things might look more in the future as the high streets change and as town centres respond to the challenges. And again, councillor Thomas alluded to this earlier with the master planning that we're doing, which is looking at those challenges. And 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 these changes that have come about really rapidly probably would ultimately have happened anyway. But have been thrust upon everybody at a huge rate, a huge rate of knots over the last few months. And we've done a lot of signposting to the correct agency, as I said earlier, regulatory services and county council have been excellent partners to work with through this and to make sure that we get information out from them to go to businesses. We have a four thousand strong mailing list which we send out regularly to businesses to try and keep everyone up to date where of the any changes and any opportunities that there might be in terms of funding, et cetera. So next slide, please, Tracy. And so moving along slightly more to the the intermediate phase, if you like. This is more about what has happened since that immediate impact. And I really should have prefaced this slide really with saying opening up the toilets, which might sound like a trivial point. But having public conveniences open made a huge difference and it was very, very well appreciated. And certainly I know from visiting London around that time in July, could not find a public toilet that was open. And that's incredibly difficult. And perhaps it's only when you're in that position that you realise how difficult it is when there's no pubs open, no ways open, you can't use a loo. And actually, I think it was very important to get those open and to bring almost like a sense of reassurance perhaps to 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 people that they could visit the town centres and do some of the things that they usually do. And of course, the whole process was risk assessed properly prior to opening. I also did put on that side about the installation of hand sanitizer posts, which again helped enormously, I think, in providing that reassurance. So looking at the things I did put on there, we started out with the town centre recovery officers, they're now in post and they're working hard for Christmas campaigns and initiatives designed to get people into the towns and into Broadway, which is also, these posts cover Broadway as well as three towns. It's no surprise to discover that the late night shopping in Broadway, which is a huge event normally, won't be happening this year and nor will the usual Christmas turn on lights turn on events as far as I'm aware. You know, they create large crowds, so they they can't happen. So I think we've, sorry, I was looking at my slide, my slides there and it seems to have jumped, but it's okay, I can still see it. So if people can be encouraged to visit steadily over a period of time rather than all in one go, it can still create a safe, enjoyable atmosphere. And that's what the two town centre recovery office post, recovery offices are working towards to try and support that. They're also working with local business groups like the Broadway Business Association and the Vale of Esham Commerce and Tourism Association. And to try and understand from them how to help perhaps regenerate the one in Pershore, there was a Pershore Chamber of Trade, it's currently dormant, I suppose is the best word, and there isn't such a body in Droidwich. And they're really important groups to have to support networking, information dissemination and and to help lead on local events and support the business community. Another thing they're working on, the 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 two offices, is the arts-based events. I think the arts has a critical role to play in in trying to encourage people back into the towns. The other thing, things that we've done with the three cinema screenings were huge amount of work, particularly for Steve Knight in nineteen, he worked tirelessly in the planning organisation and delivery of those events. They were very well received and the council will work hard to support something similar, if possible, again, next year. And on the same day as Droidwich cinema event, there was also a very scaled down Salt Fest event, which was basically market stalls within Vine's Park, again, very well received. And the medieval festival the following weekend in Evesham also went down very well. And I think great credit goes to the organiser, Mick Hurst, who put so much effort into making that a state and enjoyable event. Worcestershire Regulatory Services, the Public Health Team and Whichaven District Council supported the event. And whilst there was some negativity on social media, I think it showed Evesham in a great light and bringing many leading medieval reenactors and stall holders to the town. And it was safe. As far as I'm aware, there were no subsequent issues that happened. So last slide, please now, Tracy. And currently, and again, I get back to my first point about the big increase unemployment and the drop in G D P. And against that context, it is a fact that whenever there is a recession, there will always be startups that follow that recession. That, if you like, is perhaps this sort of silver lining that you're grass before, then you're you're hoping will come round. We hope that things will soon get better and some of those startups will start to happen. But we we know they will, experience shows they will. I'm taking a paper to the executive board of the council in a few weeks' time to seek some additional funds, as all other councils are across across the county, to support business-to-customer activity. Because traditionally, the government funds have always focused on business-to-business activity. But we know there is going to be an awful lot of business-to-customer, B to C, as it's known, activity and startup. So it's really important to be ready to support those people who perhaps having been made redundant are seeking to start up their own business. And inquiries are, of course, coming in already, so it is really important to be doing that. We're also redoubling again, as councillor Thomas referenced earlier, redoubling the efforts to increase apprenticeship recruitment. The budget for that was increased by the council at the start of this financial year. And we will be pushing, we are pushing on, we're trying to get more businesses to take on apprentices because no matter what happens, that is still the way to ensure a degree of growing your own and sustainability within. And we're doing lots of increasing, improving our communications with businesses via a regular newsletter, which is now four thousand strong, as I mentioned earlier. And that means we can communicate key messages really well. We're doing much more social media promotion by the Vale and Spa brand. And that's important, the brand is gaining more and more traction. And we want to use that to get more people to come in on and do things like the trails that the 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 arts trail type thing I mentioned earlier, where you can use the arts as a means to get people into the towns, safely into the towns. And then whilst there, to visit shops and particularly the independent shops, restaurants, retailers, et cetera, that we have in all of the towns and in Broadway. And so it's important to focus a lot on the natural environment, on walking, on cycling, of course, as was mentioned earlier. And that last point on there about active travel is important. We the the council will be putting in better cycling shelters in each of the towns. And that's an attempt to get more people to use the 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 towns on two wheels, to come in 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 that way. I've just been lucky enough to have a holiday in Italy and I saw in Italy the impact of the grants the Italian government have brought in for everyone buying an electric bike. And you can go up to five hundred euros towards the cost of an electric bike. And it was unbelievable. I've never seen as many bikes or the variety of bikes in my life, as I saw over there, absolutely extraordinary. We obviously as a council can't match what the Italian government have done, but perhaps there's some work there to be done on promoting that through the new active travel officer. How can we sort of build up a head of steam so we try and get more funding towards encouraging people to take up electric bikes? And I would add another point on there, which I didn't, which I should do. I was I was on a Zoom meeting earlier about the broadband scheme across the county. And there's a couple of excellent examples of community engagement and community projects, one particularly in Tibbeton, which is looking, it's looking like it's going to bring in a fantastic fibre to the premises solution to Tibbeton in the near future. And for anyone in any of the rural areas who is finding it hard with broadband where it could be improved, there are community schemes. And I think this is something that we must seek to encourage. And I will make sure we 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 get more of this information out in our own business newsletters and I'll work with colleagues to make sure we go it out to the parish councils. It's certainly gone out to parish councils before. It is regularly advertised that there is the opportunity to develop local partnerships to get support for for better broadband. And what I've heard today was quite exciting about Tibbeton. And I think that's you know, a real positive to take away from this because inevitably we need more and better broadband as as we head into the future. So that's my three slides. I'm probably slightly ahead of schedule, but I think that's probably not a bad thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris. And now for housing updates, I'd like to introduce Stephen Gabriel, who's the director of housing and communities. So over to you, Stephen, thank you.
Okay, thank you Jed and good evening, everybody. I'll start my presentation really just by sharing this timeline that we've produced, I think, I think actually we've unashamedly nicked it from somebody. But effectively, this timeline shows the work that we've been doing around housing and some of the things that we've got coming down the line. So back in March, on twenty first of March, local authorities got a letter from the Secretary of State saying that you needed to get all your rough sleepers off the street and into accommodation. That was it, it was a letter. Jack duly passed that on to me and said, you need to go and sort that out. A real issue for us because rough sleepers do come with a number of complex issues, you know, some of them suffer from mental health issues, substance misuse. So actually really difficult to try and make sure that we've got the right type of support for those individuals. On the twenty third of March, we then went into lockdown and our teams were working tirelessly with those individuals to get them into accommodation. I will talk to you a little bit more about the work of the homelessness task force later on in the presentation. Nationally, there was a homelessness task force that was set up and chaired by Louise Casey. That then began to look at best practice and work with local authorities just around the types of things that we should be doing, but also supporting us around some of the challenges that we might face and championing some of those. Just moving it further than, we know that they introduced the furlough scheme and that was extended. And the government did introduce a number of measures, so private sector evictions and putting a halt on those. That was really helpful because that slowed down the stem of private landlords making people homeless during the pandemic and that was further extended also. But then one of the key things that I wanted to note on this slide before I move on is that we're now at the point where we've got the winter flu season beginning. We will soon be going into a point where we'll be required to support supply shelter accommodation for individual because of severe weather. Emergency protocol will kick in and we know that there's a peak around rough sleepers around January. So, okay Tracy, if you can move on for us, please. So when we got the letter, it was called the everyone in campaign. At that moment in time, we were aware of roughly about twenty five individuals, some who were on the street, but those who were also threatened with homelessness, people who were potentially soul for surfing. And what we were able to do for that initial cohort and is find these various locations. So we were able to support them through our housing first model. We got some people into social housing tendencies or into supported housing. We moved people into bed and breakfast. But one of the things, there were a number of individuals and a particular high street comes to mind who were really entrenched and would not engage with our services and would not come off the streets. And what we had to do as a team was work multi-agency. So we had to work with other services to address the needs of some of these individuals. And I can recall some of the individuals having three and four officers visiting them from health, from the police, that the housing outreach worker, just to see if we could start to work with them to get them into accommodation. Thanks Tracy. So how has Covid impacted on the homelessness service and the work that we've been doing over the last six, seven months? So up until quarter two, we've had eight hundred approaches from individuals around homeless. Now, this just isn't single single rough sleepers. This is approaches from across the board. We've seen an increase in domestic abuse and relationship breakdown. And we've also seen that through work that I'm engaged in through the countywide domestic abuse forum. And we're working very closely with the police to understand those areas within which haven that have over the average amounts of incidences and what support we'll need to give to communities there. And I spoke about rough sleepers not engaging with our services and some of the challenges that that brought about. But actually, that also brought about a number of opportunities because we were really able to operationally build relationships with frontline health workers, frontline police officers and other services. So we had a collaborative approach to responding to those individuals. We've seen a significant increase in people suffering from financial hardship and, you know, I'm expecting that still to go further. When the furlough scheme ends and people may be maybe made redundant and unemployment increases. And, you know, our food banks have been a godsend, haven't they? We've seen a twenty five percent increase in approaches to our feed banks, particularly in Evesham and Droidwich. Let's start Tracy. So has Covid brought improvements to our service? So I've said we worked with roughly around fifty rough sleepers, some that were, you know, majority that were on the street, but those who were at fear of going into rough sleeping. We accommodated them through the lockdown, so we worked with other districts and we procured a hotel in Worcester City and we were able to accommodate all, well, the majority of the rough sleepers across the county in that hotel. No mean feat. And as I've said, that, you know, you had people in there with a range of complex issues. So the support that went into that was virtually twenty four hours, needed security. But we did work with our health colleagues to make sure that we were able to offer some health services while individuals were there. Spoke about domestic abuse and we've worked really closely with our community safety teams and women's aid and the dorm project about how we can work and work in a much more coordinated way. And as early as last week, actually, I was at a domestic abuse forum where we were talking about how we could improve some of our operational approaches, working with the police and housing teams. That's an action that we've taken away. What was really useful for us was that when we had those entrenched individuals is that actually we started to work with our partners and we had multidisciplinary team meetings around those individuals. Now, that was very time intensive, but I think that was the only way we were really able to try and get a route off the streets for some of those individuals and really identify what support, what support they needed. Or in some cases, what potential enforcement action would be needed. We established a homelessness task force thing towards the end of March, early April. I was asked to chair that task force and that included a range of partners from health, the police, our commission services around drug and alcohol. And what was interesting, you know, working with like the Health and Care Trust, the community commission, clinical commissioning groups. So there's a wide range of partners really looking to drive this issue forward. And have really, you know, the task forces met on a weekly basis since it established and we've now recently gone to fortnightly meetings. Okay Tracy? So when we developed the task force and some people would have seen this, I said, actually, I wanted to keep it simple and we wanted a plan on a page. So this is what I attest every time I talk about the work of the task force. We broke down into five work streams, one which was looking at the accommodation and making sure we had sufficient accommodation for rough sleepers. What was really important was us working with public health. There were a number of public health issues for rough sleepers, particularly if they were symptomatic. But also about the guidelines that we produced for keeping people in shared facilities or the hotel. And I'm pleased to say that the guidance that we produced has been used nationally actually for other settings, other similar settings. There was a role for local authorities to come together and coordinate activities, particularly around commissioning of services. And our strategic housing officer group led that work. Working with colleagues in public health and this is still ongoing, looking at commission services around drug and alcohol and how they could support individuals who were living on the street. And I think the big thing here, Bradley mentioned it really, this was, this is really an opportunity for us to reshape and reconfigure our our service to rough sleepers. I think it's a once in a lifetime opportunity. I've been working in housing for a while and I've never heard the Secretary of State say get all those rough sleepers off the street. So at that point, we had to really take it as an opportunity. We established a recovery group and interestingly, it wasn't a partner that we chose to chair the recovery group. So it wasn't a statutory partner and it wasn't a local authority officer like me or someone from the health service. It was actually someone who works in the voluntary sector. Because my view is they've got a lot to bring in how we shape our services moving forward. So that recovery group is chaired by Jonathan Sutton. Some of you may know him, he's the chief executive of St Paul's. And one of the key things that's going to come out of this work is that we are going to refresh our homelessness strategy, which we, and rough sleeper strategy, which we only updated last year. But in light of Covid, in light of the positive working that's taken place and the opportunities that have come, we feel that we need to refresh that countywide strategy. Next one, please Tracy. So the government were committed to some longer term sustainable options for accommodation for rough sleepers. And I think sometime towards the end of June, they announced the next steps accommodation programme and told us that we needed to get a submission in by the twenty fourth of July. So gave us four weeks to really pull together a submission that will address the issues that we have. They've already told us that they've awarded us four hundred and forty five thousand pounds for our short term initiatives. We asked for about six hundred and fifty one thousand pounds across the county. This is the countywide approach that we're adopting to address this issue. And I think that we've done pretty well actually. And when we look at comparing to other counties similar to ours, we did fare pretty well in the short term, short term funding. We're still awaiting the outcome of the longer term funding. I suppose one of the concerns for me there is that, you know, some of the urban areas may may eat up a lot of that longer term capital funding for this round. There will be future rounds and the task force is preparing ourselves for for future submission. We're utilizing that funding for emergency hotel accommodation and also looking at reconfiguring our existing emergency service because we can't, for our SWEP, as we call it, severe weather emergency protocol, we can't have people in shared accommodation settings for the winter that's coming. So we need to look a different way of how we deliver that service. We've really improved how we use the data and through working with public health, have a much more evidence based approach on how we're going to spend that funding. And what's been really important in us pulling together this submission is that we've worked with our M H C L G advisers. So we have two advisers and we were meeting with them weekly to get the submission in. So I think we've done pretty well as a county. My task now, along with my other colleagues, is to make sure that we implement it and we begin to offer real alternatives for those rough sleepers. Thanks Tracy. Okay, so what are some of the challenges when we deal with rough sleepers? You know, they will have poor housing history in the local area, so they'll probably be known to all the social housing providers probably have been involved in antisocial behaviour or what seems antisocial behaviour and lost their tendencies. I've spoke about complex needs, but also that matched with offending history as well. Lots of these individuals will have significant rent arrears. We talk about trauma informed approaches. So, you know, a lot of people have come to us with childhood and adult trauma. And we're training our team to work with individuals in that way and to understand some of the motivations that they may have. It's been difficult to maintain face to face engagement, but our outreach teams have been out there working with with rough sleepers and where we can, we've used things like WhatsApp under the face to face, sorry, virtual means where we can do that. We've had a lot of support from the local community, you know, ever since I've been here two years in November and the community will to support rough sleepers has always been there. Sometimes not helping in the way that we would potentially would like. But I think there's some work for us to do about how we can improve the relationships that we have with communities to support that wider, that wider offering that we've got to rough sleepers. And I think one of the things that we need to look at is how do we positively engage rough sleepers rather than criminalise them? And, you know, none of us want to go down the route of criminalising individuals. And that includes the police. So we do think about how we can work with them positively. But there are cases where we've got people who are causing issues on high streets and other areas and we do need to work with other colleagues to to address those issues. Tracy, thanks. Just a quick rough sleeper case study. We had someone that was evicted on one of our high streets, who was evicted from private rented sector accommodation for bizarre behaviour and rent arrears. Evicted out of temporary accommodation that we were able to get them into because of rent arrears. Made their way onto the streets, didn't want any mental health support. Was abusing substances, but actually was really difficult to get support, you know, talking about six months to get support from substance misuse services. Had declined offers of accommodation simply because their needs were too high. And also rejected accommodation through the Covid period. So we had offered and offered an offer to take this person off the streets, wouldn't do it. And then I spoke briefly about the housing first programme that we had. And that's where we really looked at identifying suitable accommodation for the individual and getting intensive support to go in and work with that individual on a daily basis. So there was a pilot that we'd launched across the county and we were able to get this individual into the housing first pilot. And as far as I'm aware, they were offered a social housing tendency in May twenty twenty and they've maintained that tendency through that programme. Housing First is a national programme and some of the pilot areas are receiving millions of pounds. We haven't, we haven't had that. We've put significant funding into it, but we've had to work with partners and take advantage of some of their goodwill. Next one, please Tracy. Okay, just quickly, just some of the numbers there. We can share this infographic, but this was just some of the figures that we that we'd worked with up until the end of quarter one. Okay Tracy, you can move on, I'm going to detail on that. Okay, so how can you help? I've been promoting and we've been promoting the use of the Streetlink app. So there's an app that you can download onto your phone and if you see someone that's rough sleeping, if you report it on that app, it will then come through to our outreach team and we will be able to deploy our officers to go and engage with that rough sleeper. I mean, I know that people do get messages directly through to me and I do, we do action them. But it would be really helpful if people utilise the Streetlink app. Okay Tracy, I think that's my final slide. So any questions?
Thank you very much there, Stephen. We have questions and I'd like to start with Lyn Raymer and this is a question to Chris Brooks. Do you have any plans to improve cycle pass around Pershaw to Evesham?
Thanks for the question. I certainly don't because it wouldn't be my job to do it. I think it's the kind of thing that comes through the planning system, new developments, for instance, there is a new safe cycle route going in Wyre Road at the moment. And that's been based on developer contributions, et cetera. So it's not a question I can answer with any great degree of knowledge. I think it's something that is for the active travel officer or in the meantime probably for somebody within the policy plans team. So Lyn wants to get in touch.
Okay, okay. Yes, Vic, I could probably have a stab at that question, Jen, Vic. So what I do know that in the county councils, Worcestershire County Council's local transport plan, L T P four, there is an active travel corridor between Evesham and Pershaw as well as several more around South Worcestershire. We're not aware that any progress has been made on that and that is certainly something that the council's active travel officer will want to engage with the county on in terms of making progress.
in terms of making progress on some of these on some of these plans. But yeah, if you Google it, you can go on the county council's website and Google um local transport plan, you'll see all the active travel corridors that are in the plan for the period up to twenty thirty. And as I say, we will certainly be engaging with the county council to see whether or not we can make quicker progress on some of these things.
Okay, thank you, Vic. Now a question from Graham Bocock. And this is again uh for Chris. Representing a rural council, several of these initiatives are news to me. Is there perhaps a need to consider more communications to the rural parishes? Chris?
I'm sorry to hear that. As far as I'm aware, these have all been advertised through the parish matters and other routes. Um, and whenever there's something new comes up on broadband, for instance, that will always go in there. So I think perhaps we we could maybe think about social media or other means as well. So perhaps another one to pick up afterwards and I'll pick it up with the comments team.
Okay, thank you very much, sir Chris. I said there was a question from Stuart, Stuart Carter, but it seems like it's been answered. So um I I I'll just say anyway, is it is it best to report any homelessness via the Streetlink website or direct to an officer at Witchaven District Council? And that's for you, Stephen.
Yeah, I I'd say through the Streetlink app, um because what happens, it comes through to our outreach team and we we will uh have a kind of digital record of of that uh um inquiry being made. So yeah, I'd say through the air.
Fabulous. Thank you very much. So again, moving on now to the new homes bonus and community legacy grants. And I'd like to introduce Cherry Mansfield and David Mannan, strategy and performance manager, community programmes manager. Over to Cherry.
Good evening, everybody. Um. I'm just going to touch briefly on new homes bonus and then Dave is going to pick up the community legacy grants. So many of you will be aware that the new homes bonus scheme has been in operation for around eight years, I think. Um. And as part of that, we set aside three and a half million pounds for town and parish councils for community projects. And of that money, we've paid out about two and a half million pounds, which has gone to hundreds, probably several hundred community projects, which parish and town councils across the district, including many of you, have led and been heavily involved in. So of the remaining million or so, um seven hundred thousand pounds of that has been approved for projects, some of them quite some time ago, but it's still in our bank account and we're really keen for you to then get those projects underway, to start delivering them and to spend that money. Or tell us you don't need the money for those projects and would like to use it for something else. And we've got around three hundred to four hundred thousand pounds still there, which is uncommitted. So um, some of you will still have sizable chunks. Some of you may only have a thousand pounds or a couple of hundred pounds left. So we've recently contacted all parish and town council clerks with arrangements for closing the new homes bonus scheme. Um. So I'm not going to go into all the details of that because your clerks have them, but there was a few key messages. So one of the key messages is the scheme will close to new applications from you at the end of March next year. So if you do have some money left, please have a think about how you want to use that and get your applications in by the end of March at the latest. Um. Any applications that come in now and projects that we approve, um, we would like you to commence work on those projects by the end of March twenty twenty two. So bear that in mind when planning your projects. We've also um set some deadlines for projects where we've already approved the funding for those projects to get underway. Um. And those deadlines depend on how long ago we approved the project. So if we've only approved them recently, the deadline's a bit longer than if we approved them two years ago. And your clerks have the details of what those deadlines are. So we really want this money to go to projects that happen rather than sitting in our bank account. So that's that's the reason we've decided to bring the scheme to a managed close, if you like. So at the end of March, there may be some funds that are unspent um and uncommitted, and they will transfer to the community legacy grant scheme. There may be further down the line, some funds that are unspent because for whatever reason, you're unable to start those projects. And again, they will go into the community legacy grant scheme. So the money will still go to community projects, just in a different way. So your clerk's got the full details. For some of you, you probably haven't had much new homes bonus and some of you have spent it all up. But but there are quite a few of you who still have either some money left or some projects approved that you need to get underway. I'll now hand over to David, who will talk about community legacy grants.
Uh. Thanks very much, Cherry. Uh. Good evening, everybody. Um. Just wanted to to sort of bring you up to speed really on the the community legacy grant. I'm sure that a lot of you are aware of the the scheme. Um. So I'm going to start off with a little bit of background, just for those who who haven't come across it before. But more importantly, I'm going to tell you uh in a little bit about how you can access it, and that's probably the more important bit. Um. So community legacy grants, um three million pound scheme funded through new homes bonus uh over a three-year period. It's for town and parish councils um to uh bit uh come up with really good innovative projects that can leave a lasting legacy. So uh over the first two rounds, uh we awarded about one point seven million. Um. And that leaves one point three million available for uh for projects in round three, which is now open and and opened a a few weeks ago now. Um. As I said, you know, this is for ambitious, innovative, uh exciting uh capital projects uh that are going to lead a really big legacy uh for the local community. Um. And and for smaller initiatives as well. So uh but the key thing is really whether it's a capital project or or a smaller startup screen. Um. It it's about meeting local need and leaving a leaving an important legacy. So Trace, can we have the next slide, please? I thought it'd be good to just um showcase some of the projects that we funded over the the past couple of rounds. Just so it gives you a flavour of the sorts of things that we're we're working on at the moment. Um. Going clockwise around that uh that slide, uh so top top left is um Honeybourne Village Hall, which uh received a contribution uh to um uh from the Look Community Legacy Grant, really exciting new hall in in Honeybourne that's going to make a big difference. Um. That central slide is the the Norton Connector. It's a uh community transport scheme that we've uh we're funding through uh through community legacy grants. And that's an example of one of these smaller startup schemes really that's um that 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 we're really pleased to have a look at and and consider. Uh. On the right-hand side, you won't be able to tell much about that because it's in such early stages, but that is actually a uh an adult community learning centre called The Cabin, uh and it's in in Droidwich. Uh. It's actually a lot further along uh than that now, but so really pleased to have that as as part of this whole portfolio of projects that that we've been able to to help. Uh. And then the bottom bottom left one is a little bit more traditional, but it's it's a play area in 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 Peepleton. So um it just shows you, gives you a flavour of the sorts of things that we've been looking at. Uh. And uh, yeah, the exciting things really. So can we have the 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 next slide, please, Tracy? Uh. Okay, I said, um, expressions of interest now open for round three. Um. So opened a couple of weeks ago and pleased to say we're already starting to get some through. Uh. We're able to have a look at them. Um. And the deadline for for the expressions of interest in in this round is the seventh of December. I will say, please, please, please don't leave it that long i- in applying if you are interested because um, well, fundamentally, if we if we say, yeah, you know, this fits in in with the community legacy grant, the earlier you get it into us, the earlier you can get started on um uh on your full applications. And really, I think mo- most uh applicants who have been through the community legacy grant will say, you know, the more time you've got at that, the better really. Um. So assuming that that you submit an expression of interest um via our online form, which I'll I'll tell you about in a minute. Um. And and we're invited to proceed to full application. Uh. We're going to be running a training session for applications and for applicants uh in the middle of January, thirtieth of January. And at that training session, we'll cover things like approaches to consultation, which is always something that comes up under community legacy grant. Um. We'll also be looking at things like risk assessments and uh sort of project planning and that sort of thing. So it's going to be a really useful session, hopefully. Uh. The deadline for full applications uh is going to be the fifth of March. So we 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 know that that that's the endpoint to it. Uh. And we'll be um going to assess those applications later on that month and into April. And then after that, of course, uh applicants applicants will be notified of the outcomes. Um. I think that gives you a kind of overview of the legacy grant. Tells you the timescales that we're working to this year or most of them. Um. If you do want to find out more or you want to put in an expression of interest, then uh you can see on the slide there uh the the link to follow the website. And uh, yeah, please go ahead, get your expression of interest um into us as quickly as possible so we can have a look at it and and get some get some projects going. I think that's it. Thank you.
David, um we do have a question though from Martin Masefield. With new homes bonus being ended and the proposals to remove the need for developer contributions for developments of less than forty homes, what is the propose to replace this funding for rural areas? In most rural areas, there are few individual developments over forty homes. And the loss, bear with me. And the loss of funding will be significant as we'll have to increase burden and reduce resource.
I can probably answer the first bit, but not the developer contributions bit. So in terms of new homes bonus, um it was never intended that the new homes bonus scheme in the way Witchaven decided to operate, it would continue forever. Um. Uh. The alternative at the moment is the community legacy grant scheme. You know, that's open to all parish and town councils, all parts of the district. Um. So if you've got projects in mind that fit those criteria, get some expressions of interest in. I don't know if somebody else can pick up the developer contributions bit.
Thank you, Cherry. If um if if I just step in, so we've actually been doing some work in terms of what impact the proposal, which is all it is at the moment, would have on our affordable housing delivery. Um. Because it is a proposal, the government are saying that they are looking at um the potential to take away and and certainly increase that threshold um for a period of of eighteen months. And that's what they're asking the question about at the moment. We've responded. I know a number of uh rural communities and and uh authorities have responded. It's actually quite a small uh proportion of our overall um affordable housing stock. It does have an impact, but it doesn't apply to those parts of our districts which are rurally designated. So that would still stand. So we have, we have done some work on that, more than happy to share our response um on that um and have that circulated with the papers. In terms of how we're going to be able to capture it back, I think, you know, the the reality is if this does come into effect, um we will continue to to seek affordable housing on on the schemes that we can. And and that's the reality.
Thank you, Holly. Well, that leads nicely on to um the planning updates from Holly Jones, uh director of planning and infrastructure. So Ollie, the stage is yours again. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much and good evening all. And I'd like to apologise in advance. So some of you who were able to join yesterday evening's um parish and town council event that was for all the South Worcestershire councils. Uh. You might have seen these slides before. Um. But feel free to ask any questions that you didn't ask yesterday evening, or for those of you who haven't seen them. Um. Please do uh raise your questions anyway. So I just wanted to go through, um first of all, an update on the South Worcestershire Development Plan, the the review of that, timetable changes that we've made that have now gone through all three councils. And then a quick run-through of the proposed reforms to the planning system. So I know that's come up a few times and a lot of you have expressed concerns already. Um. Next slide, if I may, please. Um. So where are we now with the South Worcestershire Development Plan review? You you'll be aware that we have postponed the publication stage. It was due to be September this year. It has been moved back a year. Um. Parish and town councils have all been um informed of that. The decision was taken by all three councils to move the timetable back largely because of the impact of COVID. How it's impacted us is really in relation to some of the evidence base that we need to collect the plan couldn't be relied upon. We didn't have normal movement of traffic, um people moving around, so we couldn't undertake the traffic modelling work that we had planned. That then impacts on air quality data, which also then has an impact on the way in which we look at the impact of proposed development on European sites and species. So it had, it had a significant impact on our evidence base. It hasn't necessarily had an impact on a lot of the policies in the plan. So work has still been progressed, but effectively we've been caught by some of the data that we can't collect at the moment. And we are conscious now that the proposed changes to the planning system, if in fact they are realised, would have significant bearing on the plan, but I'll come on to that. If I could have the next slide, please? Thank you very much. So this is the timetable that we are now working to. You'll be able to see there that we've put the publication back. So um the publication version of the plan would again go to the three councils. And if approved, we'll go out for consultation in October next year. Then we'd be submitting the plan in spring, in in the year twenty twenty two with examination due to follow in the summer. All being well, we'd be looking to adopt the plan in twenty twenty three. Next slide, please. We're also doing a focused um consultation um at the beginning of March next year. And the reason being is to allow further opportunity for comment on the sustainability appraisal part of the uh plan. So that's the appraisal of the plan itself and its policies. So that's something that we're seeking to do. It is not a consultation on the whole plan again. It's the supporting documentation. So we'll be running a six-week public consultation um from from March, so something to look out for. But it's not um an opportunity to tell us about uh the sites that you do and don't like again. So we'll be making that very clear when we hold that consultation. Thank you. Next slide, please. The intention um being, of course, once we have made um changes to the plan and and they are approved. Um. The comments we receive at that stage, of course, get packaged up and sent to the Planning Inspectorate for consideration, at which point we are in the hands of the Planning Inspectorate now. I'm conscious that particularly in light of the reforms to the planning system, it's caused some authorities to pause, stop work and some authorities to effectively speed up what they were doing, largely because they're concerned about housing numbers. And I'll talk a bit, a little bit about that um in due course. Um. But those are the dates that we we have published. Those are the dates we are working to. If we can speed things up, we will. And depending on when we get some of the reforms come in, if indeed they do, then I think it would be fair to say that we would be doing everything we could to move the timetable forward. But we need to go with a realistic timetable at the moment, but we might need to bring things forward more quickly. So um we will, of course, keep you all posted um on how that's progressing. Next slide, please. Thank you. So in addition to the plan itself, the timetable changes have also allowed us the opportunity to look at another document um that the policy team are preparing. And this is a site allocation plan for travellers and travelling show people. This is a document that we weren't going to be able to um finalise as quickly. Um. And the change in timetable for the S W D P R has meant that we can bring this forward. So I've just set out the timetable um on on this slide as well. It's likely that we'd be looking at consultation on the Travellers and Travelling Showpeople document in March. So around the same time that we'd be inviting comments on a focused consultation on the sustainability appraisal. So look out for documents coming from our team and notifications in March of next year. Thank you. Next slide, please. Okay, I'm just going to give a very quick run through of the two documents that the government published this summer. I think a lot of us were quite surprised at how significant they are and the changes that were being proposed. There were two documents. The first one, the one with the less exciting cover, that is the document changes to the current planning system. That consultation is already closed. We shared with town and parish councils a copy of the draft response we were going to make. And again, we submitted to all of you our final response. So everybody should have been able to see that. We hope that by sharing our draft, it might have helped with some of your comments if you made separate comments back to the government and certainly something that we would encourage. This document changes to the current planning system. And the reason why the government have done these separately is because these changes that they are talking about in the first document can be introduced very quickly. They can be introduced effectively overnight through changes to the National Planning Practice Guardians. They do not have to go through the same process that the consultation proposals in the other document are subject to. So that is why they've done it separately. And just to give you an idea, in terms of the housing numbers, which I know has caught a lot of people's attention, certainly ours, for reasons I'll explain, the proposed change to the methodology is set out within the first document. So the changes to the methodology, which factor in our latest affordability calculations, which look at demand and delivery that's already taken place, are included within the first document. The point, and some of you may have heard that the government are also consulting on making those numbers binding upon local authorities, that is in the second document. So that's why there is a slight difference between the two. So the one with the picture on the front, that is the one that we are currently finalising our response to. That is Planning for the Future White Paper. That is the more detailed document. That is the one that starts to talk about the planning system more fundamentally. So the consultation close date for that particular document is the 29th of October. So we've all got time still to get our responses back. It is very much our intention again to share with all town and parish councils our draft response and then, of course, give you our final response as well. We hope that will be useful. If I can ask, please, for the next slide. So I'm just talking about the first document. So the consultation is closed on this already, but just to recap what this is doing. This is changing, seeking comments on the changes to the standard method, which I've just mentioned. Also talking about securing of first homes through developer contributions, lifting the small sites threshold for affordable housing. I know that's already been mentioned and a number of you have got concerns about that. And also extending the current permission and principal regime to include major developments. At the moment, it doesn't apply to major developments. So that's what that consultation is really focusing on. If I could have the next slide, please. Thank you. So the reason for the changes that we've seen within this particular document are really supporting the government's ambitions to deliver 300,000 homes per year. The adjustments to the formula that have been introduced for consultation, they take into account the latest household growth protections or 0.5% of existing housing stock, whichever is the higher. It also includes, as I've mentioned, the affordability adjustments of the latest data. So that has had quite a significant impact across the South Worcestershire councils, notably in Malvern Hills, also in Wychaven, but actually within Worcester City has decreased the number slightly. It's quite marginal. But overall, the result for the three South Worcestershire councils is an increase in the annual housing requirement, which effectively doubles it. So it would take it from 1,257 per year to 2,582 homes per year. So instead of writing a plan, which we have at the moment, that is looking for an additional 14,000 homes over and above what are already planned and committed, we'd be looking for 43,000 homes. So it is a significant change for us. We will be raising those concerns. We have shared our concerns already with yourselves, with national bodies and with our MPs as well. So we are not the only authority in this regard. And we are also talking to the minister through various routes because of these particular concerns. And I know that our councillors are doing the same. Next slide, please. Okay, I mentioned as well, the other things within this particular consultation, this was delivering first homes. So this is the minimum of a quarter of affordable housing that we secure on sites coming forward would be delivered as first homes. And that's one of the initiatives that the government has been really keen to push. We've talked about raising the threshold for small sites to forty or fifty dwellings for an initial eighteen-month period. Now, this is apparently designed to help support small and medium house builders. That is why the government is suggesting it's a good idea. We have made comments on that. We do have concerns, but as I said, it doesn't apply to rurally designated areas. So the impact on us is not as high as it might be in other areas. And the other one was the extension of permission and first ball to major developments. Okay, if I could have the next slide, please. And moving on then to the Planning for the Future White Paper. So this is the document that's still live, that we're inviting comments on at the current time. And it's really looking at quite significant changes to the planning system, the likes of which we haven't seen in years. I think it would be fair to say that usually when the government suggests that it's changing the planning system to make it simpler, quicker, et cetera, they tweak around the edges. This is the biggest change that we've seen. They're talking about three pillars of the planning system and they've got twenty-four proposals for change within the document. They want to make sure that the planning system doesn't get in the way of residential development. They have included a greater emphasis on good quality design, infrastructure provision as well. And you may have heard comments that community engagement within the planning system is going to alter significantly. Effectively, what they're talking about is putting it upfront. So there is less when we get to a planning application stage and planning applications are changing as well. Included within the paper are also consultation proposals on greater digitisation, so getting us more digitised within the planning system and using different technology. So I think that that's something that all authorities are going to be in slightly different positions in terms of being able to accept that. And if I could ask for the next slide, please. So one of the key pillars, so I mentioned there were three key pillars, Planning for Development. This is and this is a big change. This is moving our planning system from where it is at the moment into a more zone-based approach. So we'd identify areas within the plan in one of three categories. It would either be for growth, for renewal or for protection effectively. So that is a big change. That's more like the system that you might see in America, et cetera, but it's more landzone-based. Areas that were identified within a growth area would be given automatic outline planning permission. So that's a really big change for us. There are detailed policies at a national level. They're expecting our local plans to be much slimmer. And although they've been saying it for years, please don't duplicate national policy. I think we all do it. But the expectation is that they are much slimmer. They want to see shorter documents that do focus on design codes as well. They're really strong on their design codes within the document. Instead of the existing tests of soundness that we have at the examination stage, they're going to have a single sustainable development test. There's not a great deal of detail on this at the moment. We don't know exactly what it's going to look like. And I would say that applies to quite a lot of these proposals at the moment. And it makes it quite difficult at times to respond to the consultation because we don't know the detail and substance of exactly what these things are going to look like. Next is the new standard method, as I mentioned as well. This would include it being binding on authorities. Thank you. Could I have the next slide, please? Okay, so still within the same pillar of planning for development. We talked about faster, more certain decision-making, firm deadlines, making greater use of technology. Don't know quite how we're going to sort of automate things, but that is certainly something that the government wants us to look at. Standardised local plans with visual map-based template as well, with our zones identified. They're talking about a statutory timetable that makes things much quicker as well. And again, with that focus of consultation at this stage, so it's not left to a later stage when you see a planning application. Neighborhood planning remains largely unchanged in these proposals. So there's not a great deal that I can say about neighbourhood planning. It's pretty much kept as it is at the moment. And a stronger emphasis on build-out through planning. So a few key proposals within that. If I could ask for the next slide as well. Thank you very much. So this is the second pillar of the white paper, Planning for Beautiful and Sustainable Periods. Now, this is a theme that runs throughout the document as well. This is the section where we start to see requirements for tree-lined roads everywhere, design codes locally produced, the requirement to have a chief officer for design in every local planning authority and a new body to actually support local planning authorities to be able to bring together these design codes. And again, there's this fast-track route that is meant to be put forward to effectively bring forward more quickly, high-quality development to accelerate it, which reflects local character and preference. So again, there's not a great deal of detail on some of these proposals, but the intention is if you are promoting something that meets your design code, has got high-quality design, that it needs to be sent through the system really quickly with an emphasis on approving it. Next slide, please. Thank you. So this within this pillar, there are proposals to amend the existing national planning policy framework to ensure that there's a greater role within the planning system to mitigate adapt to climate change and maximise environmental benefits. This is something that we have been saying for some time, that the government have set out various proposals, but not actually followed through. Still, we don't have a lot of the legislation in place to help us ask for greater climate change adaptation. And it really needs to come through, to a certain extent, through building control rather than through planning. But it does need support in planning. A simpler framework for assessing environmental impacts, greater discussion on conserving and enhancing historic buildings and areas and enhanced energy efficiency standards for buildings to help deliver the commitment that the government have to net zero by 2050. So some key points within this area. If I can ask for the next slide, please. This is the final pillar that the government are talking about as well. So within this, they're looking at how they can change the existing method of developer contributions. So reforming the community infrastructure levy into a national levy that is more standardised and gives local authorities greater freedom on how they spend money that they actually raise through the levy. At the moment, you'll be aware that parish and town councils have more flexibility on how you spell spend still contributions. It's actually more restricted for local planning authorities at the current time. And it also discusses comprehensive resources, skill strategy for planning sector to help support some of the changes that they're talking about. And finally, and I think, you know, we're all quite pleased about this one, strengthened enforcement powers and sanctions. So at the moment, I think, you know, you'll all be aware of how planning enforcement works and where we can and can't take enforcement action, where it's not really expedient to take enforcement action. So hopefully, these powers will make a difference. Thank you. And the final slide. And so just a reminder that the consultations close in October. So we've got until the 29th of October. Just for your awareness, we will be taking our draft version of our response to the Joint Advisory Panel. And that's the councillor body that review the documents of the South Worcestershire Development Plan. And we will be able to provide and circulate a copy of our draft response to all town and parish councils as well. As I say, the Planning White Paper is subject to legislative process, so it will take a lot longer to go through. So the changes, the more significant changes that set out within that document, we are going to see in an immediate way. The ones in the first document could come about quite quickly. Both documents, one of the comments that we are raising is transitional periods. Given that these changes are so significant and particularly housing numbers are so significant for our district and a lot of the more rural districts, a lot of the districts in the south of the country, the transition periods that are afforded to us are going to be quite critical. At the moment, the suggestion is, once the new method for calculating housing need comes into play, local planning authorities will have three months from that point to get a plan to the publication stage. So when I talked earlier about the timetable that we're working to, given that the numbers are so significant for us, if they stay the same, if they come into play, then we will have three months from that point to get to publication. And the discussion that we had when we were looking at the timetable through the three councils was that we would do everything we could to try and bring that forward if the numbers come in more quickly. We don't know when they're going to come in. That is something that we're very mindful of officers. The reality is, if we have to plan for effectively double the amount of homes that we've been looking for, that is a very different plan that you've seen and that we've been working on and would require us to effectively go back and find, I mean, we've talked about some of the strategic allocations before, but we'd be looking for three new pathways. That, to give you an idea of the scale of the change, and we simply don't have those. We also don't have the necessary infrastructure in place. I don't know that the house building industry is actually geared up to help deliver the amount of housing that is being discussed. It hasn't been distributed evenly across the country as well. There is a great division between the north and the south of the country. And as I said before, the urban and rural areas of the country as well. So it would be a significant change for us. So the transitional periods, something that we are going to be paying great attention to. That's the end of my slides. So I'm sure there are a number of questions arising from that and happy to answer any of those. Thank you.
Holly, and some of those numbers are quite frightening. So right, we have got a couple of questions. And I'd like to start with a question from Roger Davis. And it's re the traveller and gypsy site issue. You just put on another call for sites. Is there any system whereby we can be advised of any such submissions?
And what we're intending to do, so we've done another call for science. The reality is, when it comes to gypsy traveller and travelling showpeople sites, we have quite poor response. And we don't get a lot of sites that come through. And the ones that do come through aren't really suitable a lot of the time. One thing that we are doing to help support that work as well is look at council-owned land, the three South Worcestershire councils, and also county council-owned land to see if there's any potential land that could be used for sites as well. that could be used for sites as well. In terms of sharing it, what we'll be doing is effectively reviewing any sites that we do get. We might have a look back through other sites that have been submitted to us through the Housing and Employment Land Availability Assessment work to see if there are sites within there that don't have the potential for housing, don't have the potential for employment, that actually might make a suitable traveller site. And then we would need to go back to the person that had promoted that particular site and ask if they were willing for the site to be considered in that way. They would then be packaged up effectively, any sites that we felt did have merit to go forward into the preferred options. As I said, that's the document that we would then be coming out for consultation on in March. So bearing in mind, we would be launching the consultation at that time, according to the current timetable, then we will be looking to come back to the town and parish councils, likely through the three South Worcestershire councils again for another briefing so that you were aware of which sites we were promoting prior to that consultation launching.
Question now from Alison Keane. Just flick up to it. With more people facing unemployment and having to cut expenditure, how do we get to those who do not have internet and cannot see all the plans and circulations?
Thank you. Well, at the current time, we haven't got anything new to share. So our last consultation on the plan took place last autumn. When we haven't got anything to share and we won't be doing until March. People that haven't got access to the internet, and I don't know what proportion of our community doesn't, I think I would be encouraging our town and parish councils to help support those that didn't have access and helping us effectively promote what we were consulting on. We'll do our best to reach people, but at the same time, we won't be able to, if the restrictions are still in place, we won't be able to hold consultation events in the way that we would normally. We can't be unfortunately coming out to village halls to run events in the way that we did before. And I'm conscious that those events did provide an opportunity for people that perhaps didn't have access to the internet. So if people have got creative suggestions, solutions for us, I'd be more than happy to hear them. But I think we'll need to work with yourselves and with our district councillors to make sure the message gets out.
Question now from Andrew Hughes. How realistic is it that the SWDP can be completed in a shorter time period?
When I say a shorter time period, it will really depend on if these numbers come out and when they do. The time is going to be critical. So since the close of the consultation, the preferred options consultation, officers have effectively gone through all the comments and made changes to the policies. So that's what officers have been doing. So all of those policies have been considered, reviewed. So a large bulk of the plan is effectively drafted. What hasn't been done is, as I said, it's the evidence base. There are some gaps in the evidence base that we haven't been able to complete because of COVID restrictions. They need to be completed. We need to do that additional consultation on the sustainability appraisal. But the bulk of the plan, all of the policies are ready. There's some testing, going back and testing of the sites if we've made any changes to any sites. That also, if that impacts on transport modelling and also on European sites, that also needs to be tested. But the bulk of the plan, all the policies, that work has been done. So in terms of our potential to deliver it more quickly, I would say we are in a reasonably good position, but it will ultimately depend on when those numbers come out.
Final question for this evening is from Bob Brooks and re traveller sites again. Will the landowner be able to sell his land at a market value? What incentive is there?
So I go back to the point, so we will be inviting people to put forward land for us, you know, for us to consider. We don't get great sites back necessarily. We'll look at council owned land. And as I said, we'll be contacting those people that have put forward sites that we've considered don't really have a strong potential for housing and unemployment. Effectively, those sites probably won't get developed for anything. So, you know, it might be the case that the landowner looks at that and thinks, well, I'd rather, I'd rather sell it for gypsy and traveller use than have nothing happen. But ultimately, that's their choice. If we don't have a willing landowner, then we can't claim that that site is deliverable. So it is, I mean, it's a really difficult one to make sure that we've got sufficient sites.
Thank you, Holly. And Tracy, could I have the key takeaway messages please? Slide. Right, from this evening then, the four bullet points that I've got here are the Boundary Commission events, which David mentioned on the 12th of November. Please all get involved in the intelligently green actions. The new homes bonus and community legacy grant deadlines. All the parish clerks, please be aware of all those. And obviously, what Holly has just been saying are the planning consultation dates. Okay? Thank you all very much. Thank you, officers, and thank you to Tracy. And thank you all for logging in. I hope you've all enjoyed the presentation this evening and there will be a few questions as you log out. If you'd like to take time just to do a little survey, I think there's three questions, Tracy, is that right? Thank you. And like I say, thank you all very much for your attendance tonight and stay safe. Thank you.
Three to go.
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you, Vic.
Okay, Mandy, can you terminate the meeting? Yeah.
Thank you all very much.
Yes, we'll do.
Well done, everybody.